Before we get started this morning, I want to welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court on this December 4th, 2018. Thanks for coming out and being a part of the county's business. Before we get started, if we could get Nathan Harrington to come and lead us in prayer, and Commissioner McCam would lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
Okay, we'll just bow our heads. Father, we each thank you. Thank you so much for this day. Thank you for everything that you're doing in this place, Father. I pray that wisdom be gained from everything that you're doing in heavenly places brought here. Father, I pray that our hearts are submitted to you, and I pray that you draw those who do not yet know you unto yourself, and those who do know you, that you just fill them up with your Spirit today. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We do have a quorum, so I want to call this meeting in Commissioners' Court to order. Renade to leave any public comments. Number one on our agenda, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meetings in Commissioners' Court on November 20th, 2018. deletions or additions?
Hearing done, Judge, I move we approve Commissioners' Court, regular session, November the 20th minutes as presented.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Geisler, and second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes of November 20th as presented. All those in favor? Item two, consider and take action on the Silver County Choice Retirement Medical Program from the Texas Association of Counties. Michael, if you would, please explain this to the court.
Yes, sir. Chris said, what I have is just a renewal for our Silver Choice here for our retirees. It's just a supplement plan that we actually bring to y'all every year. When I was going over this, I was actually this year just a little bit amazed, and I actually had to call and make sure that we've got the right information because the plan actually, in dollars, had gone down just a little bit. Not much, but it still had caught my attention, of course. Their current monthly rate was $268, and that's actually dropped to $253, and so I would like this is correct. But anyway, when I called, talked with them about it, it is correct. But this is just a plan that we actually offer to our retirees if they choose. Some come in and ask about it, some don't. This is actually not, you know, the county, we don't actually do anything. This is strictly all on a retiree, is what this is. All the monies, they have to pay this. We don't even bill it. It's through United Healthcare. So I just, you know, I'd like to get their approval to go ahead and continue this for our employees. I actually, through this process, last week, I had called and talked to them, and I said, you know, I haven't heard anything. Do we have any participants at all? What they could tell me was, out of the state of Texas, there's only 161 participants. So that's the reason why we don't see this. It's not a real high-volume plan at all. One reason is because it is sort of high. Although, this plan does cover some of the stuff that Medicare doesn't cover, and of course, the prescription plan that goes along with it is something that is available to them as well. And the prescription plan is an RX plan that actually went down as well. As we all know, prescriptions are extremely high for everybody, so it was 103 a month for them, now that's even dropped to 95. But again, I'm just going to get approval on this to continue this for our employees. They did get back with me yesterday. We actually have two people that are on this plan out of 161, so I'd like to be able to continue it if we can.
Chief, do you have any questions for Michael?
It's interesting that TAC is negotiating with United on this particular plan rather than Blue Cross Blue Shield, because Blue Cross, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, you know, they have supplemental plans, and I'd like to know at some point, maybe at the next insurance meeting, why they're using United rather than Blue Cross Blue Shield. Also, I think, you know, we need to be prepared to, next year, when it rolls around, because the Medicare Access and Reauthorization Act of 2015 basically knocks out this Plan F for all retirees that would, let's say, at the end of this coming year, December the 31st, 2019. So anyone turning 65 after that point will not be eligible to utilize Plan C or Plan F. So there'll have to be something we're looking at for the retirees.
And I actually talked with them this week about, or last week about that, and you are correct, Commissioner. So there are going to be some other options. I don't have those right now, but...
But it's something we need to be looking at through 2019 to be prepared for those retirees that will be retiring at the end of next year.
Okay, that's it.
The drug, the Medicare Part D, or the prescription drug as is in the plan here at $95.62, I was surprised it went down, but, you know, in doing a little research, it appears that there may be better options out there for the retirees, and I think we should talk with TAC about that as well.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you, Commissioner. One reason is because I actually spoke with someone about this the other day, and there is some cheaper plans that are out there. Again, I'm confused why Blue Cross is going with United Healthcare.
Why TAC is going with United?
But that's just something that we can definitely check into for next year for our retirees.
Okay.
And I totally agree with you. I just need court approval, I can, of course, for the judge's signature as well.
Any other questions?
No.
No questions. Court, we entertain a motion to approve the Silver County Choice Medical Plan for the retirees of Henderson County.
Move to approve and give the judge authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the Silver County Choice Retirement Medical Program for the Henderson County retirees. All those in favor?
Thank you, Court.
Item three, consider and take action on using up to $1,000 for the awards incentives from the Healthy County Fund. Michael?
Yes, Court, I'm actually, of course, I get excited every time I come to y'all about our Healthy County group that's come together this year. Again, this year, we're coming to y'all asking for, to use approximately up to $1,000, the Healthy County Fund money. We're actually looking to try to do some incentive awards during our Christmas gathering this year. I'm excited. One reason is because we've got, this year, and just as last week, we've had up to 81 participants. We've actually had 53 people that finished the challenges and things like that. So when I look at that, and from the numbers from last year, going from 17 of completed challenges to 53, I think that's really big. I think it's good for the county. I think it's good for the morale of everyone, and so I actually really get excited about this, and I'm excited about the team that came forward to step up to help to get people where we're at today. We've come to y'all several times and asked for funds to use out of the Healthy County Fund. We've never used all of those funds completely, but the other thing I want to say, just because this year we've had 53 that have completed these challenges, and I just checked this number this morning, because I was under the impression that we received $55 per participant of completion. It's $50. So out of this money that I'm asking for today, we're going to get that money back. So I'm looking at us getting, you know, approximately about $2,700 back. Even the monies that we've already spent, we're still going to get that back, just because of our participation. So I'm pretty happy with that number. Next year, I hope that what we do this year at our Christmas gathering, that other employees are going to see this, and I hope that they all get excited about it and want to jump in the middle of it. So I just think it's really a good thing. I'll try to answer any questions I can. I've also got a couple other members here today that can probably help me. We're actually having another meeting tomorrow to go over a few other things to finalize for the year, so, but I'll be, I'll answer anything I can for you.
Do you have any questions about the Healthy County?
What kind of incentive awards are you proposing?
Letitia, you want to speak on that? She's got that together more than I have, so.
We have a grand prize, either an Apple Watch, a Yeti cooler, or a green egg grill. So throughout the year, every challenge an employee's attended, they've gotten a ticket for the jar, and if this person's already, will have a ticket, and that employee will get to pick one of those three items.
It's one of the employees that has been participating in the Healthy County Program?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've had events throughout the whole year, so every time they participate in something, we've offered, whether it be a ticket, two tickets, whatever they do, whether they've done a particular challenge of whatever that we've put out there, or actually through TAC, so it's whatever the employees have participated in, that would be a ticket. So they may have, they could have 10 tickets in this drawing, so, you know, I don't think I have 10, but I was hoping I'd be pretty close. Anyway, I think it's, I think it's really a good thing. I just had someone again tell me the other day, wow, you know, Healthy County, it's really kind of bumped the morale in my office. And I was like, wow, that's, that's good to hear. So it's not only that, you know, it's good for the county to get us all a lot healthier than what we are today, and helps on our health insurance, you know? But that's another great way to look at it.
Where does the, for the benefit of the public, where does the $50 per participant come from?
Actually, it comes from TAC, so we get a check, well, this year, but we'll go next year for our participants that we submit, because they keep a record of all of that. Every time there's a challenge that they actually put out, we do get a report on that, and I think Letitia gets that report. I just actually looked at the last one from our October challenge that we had. I was pleased with that, because a lot of people, if you finish three challenges, you automatically also get a $50 gift card from...
Amazon.
Amazon. You must have got your gift card. I know, I got mine. So you also get that, and so just to complete three challenges. So on the last challenge, we actually had 34 people that finished that one, so that was four that they actually completed, and they didn't even have to do that one. So that was, that was really great to know that they did that, so. It'll show you that people are a little more engaged than what they were last year. Like I said, we only had 17 last year, but it's come, it's come, by the way, I don't know, one day they'll put a gem in upstairs somewhere, but you know.
I mean, the overall objective of the Texas Association of Counties in establishing the Healthy County Program was to lower healthcare costs for the counties participating in their health program. Is that not true? I mean, it's, when we look at the results on an annualized basis of healthcare costs, a lot of those are caused by the diet, skeletal problems is one of the highest causes of healthcare costs, along with prescription drugs, and therefore, they established this program to assist counties in lowering their healthcare costs.
That is correct, Commissioner, so.
I just thought the public needed to understand where the money comes from and why the program exists.
Yes. If there's anybody else here with Healthy County, be glad for y'all to want to speak. If anybody wants to ammarate her a great participating, I mean, just by saying...
No, I think, you know, the funds can only be used for things such as this, and it's a great way to motivate people.
I guess she finished your...
She got her $50. Already spent it.
Well, I don't think we ought to pray, because none of us up here get a chance at anything.
They ever offer us carrots and yogurt.
Thank you, Lieutenant Cameron. I will say this, and I'm not going to call any names out loud, but we did have one precinct worker that finished all four challenges, so my goal this year is to get to you guys' office and get, get your precinct guys more involved, because I know sometimes you are, you are out there, you don't see a lot of it, but you know, that's, that's a big thing, because I really think the precinct workers could probably gain more of this than anybody, because you're out, you're walking every day where a lot of people here in our offices are sitting most of the time, so you're earning your points daily. And, but I am proud to say that, that we did have one precinct worker that finished all four challenges.
Good.
And at the very top of the list, as a matter of fact, so.
Okay.
Proud to say that. I'll let y'all think about this one.
Yeah. Court, entertain a motion to pay up to $1,000 for award incentives for Healthy County Fund.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner McKinney, to use up to $1,000 of the Healthy County Fund for award incentive, incentives for the people that have actually joined in the program and finished it. All those in favor?
Thank you, Court, I appreciate it.
Item four, consider and take action on the reappointment of three members to the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Two Board of Commissioners located in Precinct Two. Commissioner?
Yes, sir, Court. We have three current members that are wishing to be reappointed. They have been good, outstanding members, and would like to have the Court put them back in for a two-year term from January 1 of 19 to December 31 of 2020. Natalie O'Nate, Earl Beats, and Roger Previs are the three that are currently wishing to be reappointed.
Any questions for the Commissioner?
No questions.
Hearing done, Judge, I move that we reappoint Natalie O'Nate, Earl Beats, and Roger Pre- Previs.
Second, this motion.
A motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Geisler, to reappoint the three members of the ESD Number Two Board. All those in favor? Item five, receive financial reports. Thank you. With financial reports from Precinct Two, JP. Anyone would like to look at them, they'll be in the county clerk's office after court. Item six, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet. Michael?
I'll let Nikki present those to the...
Okay, Nikki.
We have, have three today. First one's for biweekly 23.
Any questions for Nikki about biweekly 23?
Seems a little light.
No questions, Court. Entertain a motion to approve the payroll distributions for biweekly 23.
So moved.
Second, this motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner Geisler, to approve the payroll distributions for biweekly 23. All those in favor? Okay, Nikki.
The next one we have is for biweekly 24. And I do want to say, this was, this was the first one for the sheriff's office to do our cash sheets, and I think that it worked out really well. It went really smooth.
Very good. Any questions about biweekly 24?
Is that why the number's slightly down? That's usually the big...
The reason this one's down a little bit, because this was the third payroll of the month.
Oh, okay.
So there was like no insurance taken out of it.
Gotcha.
I'll be happy to move to approve this one.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the biweekly 24 payroll distributions. All those in favor? Okay, Nikki.
And then our last one is for the elections. This is not, I have three more that I've just finished getting in the forms to Nikki to pay them, so I will do that today, so I have three more on the elections, but after that, that should be all of them. We have to, they may be paid.
I'm just amazed at the number.
And we'll break $50,000 by the time they're done.
Yeah. You want to make the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Judge.
We have a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner McCam, to approve the elections disbursement. Any other questions or any questions?
That'd put us over $100,000 once you take in account the primary election.
Way over $1,000.
Yeah.
Which is probably another good reason to be considering up voting, so.
Exactly. All those in favor?
And the last thing I have is the October cash balance sheet.
Okay. Are there any questions about the cash balance sheets? General questions, Court, entertain a motion to approve...
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner McKinney, to approve the cash balance sheet. All those in favor? Thanks, Nikki. Item seven, consider and take action on submitted contracts. Remedy contracts today. Item eight, consider and take action on request right-of-way permits. No right-of-way permits. Item nine, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. Item 10, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, sir. The bills this week totaled $333,785.80.
Mr. McKinney, you have any questions about the bill, sir?
Not at this time, Judge.
Mr. McCam?
No, no.
Mr. Geisler?
Inaugural Health Fund 708 sure does look grim. Of course, it didn't help with the two $10,000 bills this, this week. Josh, I had a question for you at the, we've got two bills for Sudden Lake, one for the Senior Citizens Building, and the other one for the Fairgrounds.
Two connections there.
Why do we need one...
The AG Court and the...
AG Court, okay. I didn't make that connection, why we needed to have one at the Senior Citizens Building, okay?
Because they can't enter close.
Yeah.
How much money were saving, Commissioner, on that, having it at the...
Well, we were paying them around $17,000 a year.
That's what we were paying them with?
Yeah. It varied, based on the number of hearings that were held out there, but it was between $15,000 and $18,000.
$1,000.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thought I had one more. Oh, I, I see we had, in the tax assessor collector's office, there was a printing charge. Have the, the new statements gone out? Does anyone know?
Yes.
They have?
They're working on them. If they're not all out, they're, they're closed.
Okay. Because there was a deadline to get them all out, I just wondered if they have all been mailed.
Was that, excuse me, that $8,900, was that for those?
That was from the last one.
From the last one? And that was the total of the reprint cost, or was there another one besides that? Do you know? I think that was it.
For this, the reprint, we're doing here.
Okay. It just appeared that the $20,000 that we moved was more than sufficient to cover it, and I didn't want for next year that if we were over the amount that we moved in, excuse me, we didn't come near to spending it, I didn't want it to get incorporated into the budget next year because of the...
Yeah, that $8,900 was actually from the first run.
Was from the first run? All right. Okay. Thank you.
I see that we have sprayed the insulation in the evidence building.
Yeah, we, that bill, Commissioner, that was done probably two months ago, and somehow they sent the bill to the wrong place twice, and we finally got it at the right place and got it signed off on and paid.
Okay.
That was a little bit late, not because of us.
So is the evidence building all complete?
It's all done. Electricity's hooked up to it. We got the, the two service poles put in, and all the wiring hooked up in the meter end, and we're, we're ready for business.
Okay.
Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. Rest of this week, we're finishing the scheduling, and we should be moving in next week.
Okay. Very good.
Good deal. Last question I have, there's a bill for $41,200 from Net Data. Does that indicate that the new server is up and running for records management?
Server is up and running.
Okay. No further questions, Judge?
No further questions. Court, we entertain a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $333,785.80.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner McCam, to pay the bills for this week. All those in favor? All those in favor? Item eleven, consider and take action on submitted plaits.
Is it one, not the other?
Okay.
Court, um, this started a year ago, myself and Commissioner Hayes met with the developer, uh, December of last year, at, um, Tarrant County Regional Water with, um, Bucky Butler, the director at that time, discussing this particular subdivision. Uh, it involved the closure of a roadway that actually did take place by the court this past year, and as a part of it, because they are increasing, taking many small lots into larger lots, and it actually involves two subdivisions, the Ruth Springs Section Two and the Meeks Deepwater Resort. And, uh, basically, they had met all the requirements. We closed the road that was going to be a limiting factor back in January, I believe, and, um, it has been signed off by everyone, paid tax receipts, uh, we're ready to go with this. It has been a long process, and, uh, just be glad to give it through.
Very good. Questions for Commissioner?
So the replat is basically adding the, uh, road square footage into multiple lots?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you're taking, um, basically two sets of lots on either side of the roadway. These original lots were traditionally what we called the camping lots, were fifty by one hundred, uh, and this increases them all up to one and a half acre or above, and it does take in, uh, Shady Lane, which is the road that was closed, and it allows access from the backside and the, the southern side of the road, of the subdivision as well. Um, our concern was the requirements that Tarrant County had for lot sizes along waterfront within their two thousand feet jurisdiction of the water, and after conferring with Mr. Butler, uh, he did confirm that they had no issue, even though they'd already signed, I wanted to double check.
How many, how many lots are there in total?
It creates one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lots out of about twenty-five. These are much more marketable and, um, developable, I guess that's it.
That's good work, that's good work. He built a one-story house on these instead of a two-story house on fifty by hundred?
Yes, sir.
No further questions?
Well, with that, Judge, I move that we approve the replat for Ruth Springs Edition Number Two lots, A one, B one, C one, D one, E one, F one, G one, and H one.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner.
I'll second it.
And a second by Commissioner McCam to approve the replat. All those in favor? Item twelve, openly consider bids.
Don't have one bid for the road area.
Well, I, I think we should comment on.
You accepting comments, Judge?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Please.
Um, the only issue that there seems to be is there's the one bid from, uh, Hill Camp that is, seems to be a, an add-on bid, that's actually for an aggregate, they're bidding the limestone base, that I don't know if they added it to, this is normally a rodoal bid, a material bid, I don't know if they presented that, because usually, they're separate.
Yeah, I'm thinking that they presented it, but I think you need to disregard it, it's not only a part of this activity this time, nothing else.
It is a very.
The nature of the nine month, they're back on something.
It is a very attractive price, and I know that the, the current, it beats the current aggregate bid that we have awarded, but again.
We have awarded that.
Right, we have awarded. Um, the aggregate, I think I can do this and stay legal, since we're under bids, the aggregate bid will go out in March?
Yes, right.
Or will be for approval in March, so it should be going out soon. I don't have an issue with, uh, any of them, other than I would like to hold off the Hill Camp, though it is a very attractive bid, I just think it's, doesn't fit the bid that was requested.
Nothing like always postponing something that will probably cost us more later, um, but, you know, I agree, because we, we must, we must, uh, follow all of these, uh, bid laws done by the state of Texas, even though it costs the taxpayers money, but, you know, what the heck? And then, of course, uh, you know, we have to love, love, uh, our situation here, that, uh, to buy oil now to seal coat our roads, we basically have another monopoly. Ergon, which bought Western emulsion. We waited for some time to have a little bit of competition, but then they bought out Western, so last year's price, just so folks have an idea of what, what I'm rambling on about, uh, was a, uh, a dollar seventy-nine a gallon. And now it's two dollars and forty cents a gallon. Pretty sizable increase, don't you think?
Yeah, and here with oil sitting at, at what, fifty-three dollars a barrel?
Yeah, makes, makes one wonder if, if we went out to bid for, uh, again, um, for all the emulsions, now that oil prices are dropping, if this price might change, I don't know. Uh, then, you know, the only place that we can buy asphalt, hot mix, cold mix, oil sand, it went up two dollars a ton, from seventy-five to seventy-seven. That was for cold mix. Hot mix with recycled material went from seventy-six to seventy-eight. Commissioner McKinney, you probably can help me here, because you're much younger than I am. Back in two thousand and eleven, when, I worked two thousand and twelve, when they came in and, and, and begged for a, uh, well, they didn't beg, they just told us, uh, the price was going up because oil prices, when we were paying nearly three dollars at the pump, they had to have more money, and they raised it. Um, do you remember about what we were paying in, in two thousand and eleven, twelve, for, uh, uh, hot mix?
Not off the top of my head, and I'm sorry that I, that I don't.
Hang on.
Hot mix was recycled, it was somewhere, um, in the mid to high sixties, and now it's at eighty, at eighty-one.
Yeah.
In this bid, right?
Yeah. It's over twenty dollars change in less than eight years. And my goodness, you know, I, I, I noticed, I noticed at the pumps coming in this morning, gas is cheaper, um, than it was in two thousand and eleven.
There is one price that is held true, even though we'll probably end up having to move it, and that's blazer oil.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you know, with blazer oil, you never know what they're going to do, because, you know, they, they, they basically, they treat the bid exactly the same way as when we, when we go out to bid for diesel and gasoline. It's all based on the rack price. Um, might be interesting to look at how we're bidding for emulsion products and see if we could put it out on, on, uh, you know, the, uh, Texas Association of Counties, to see if, uh, other counties are bidding for emulsion products differently than we are, see if we can base the price on what they're buying, the asphalt, from the asphalt plants, not after they process it. Because this is, you know, as, as I've said, during budget workshops, the rate in which these products are going up, we cannot keep up with, with the amount of increases we're putting into the road and bridge budget to get ahead of this curve. And I certainly, certainly do not want to place Henderson County in a position like Van Zant and Anderson County that has to go out for a road bond. So anything and everything that we, the Commissioners Court and the Purchasing Department can do to get a handle on this and figure out a better way to bid some of these products to drive these prices down, I, I, I think it would behoove everyone to engage, because this is spiraling out of control. No further comments.
On the emulsions, it is, it is a monopoly, because when we had.
Absolutely.
When we had two competitors, two vendors, like you said, the price was as low as a dollar seventy-nine.
That, that's correct.
You know, and it's a availability issue, just as it is with the Texas bid, there's, these facilities have been bought up and, um, are controlled to control the market, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I don't know.
What do we want to do?
Wicked, wicked. I don't know if we, what do we want to do with this?
I'll move forward with a motion, of course, really.
Okay.
Judge, I move that we approve, um, the bids, what is, have the right name, um, for road materials for all vendors excluding Hill Camp.
I'll second the motion.
The motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner McCam, to accept all bids, with the exception of Hill Camp. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes three, one. Court would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner McKinney, second by Commissioner McCam, to adjourn. All those in favor? We adjourn.